Good evening and thank you for tuning in to the Curriculum Evaluation Committee on Monday, April 10, 2023. It is 5:00. We are in the Nashua North High School boardroom. We have Mr. Neil Claffey.
Present.
Jessica Brown, I am present. We do have a quorum. Also in attendance, we have Kimberly Sartey and we have several representatives here to give us some presentations this evening. So, we will go ahead and dive right in. First, we're going to talk about the intersection of Amplify Science and our ELA curriculum.
Great, thank you so much. I just wanted to start off by saying that we have already established our ELA priorities for next year. And two of our priorities include leveraging complex texts and also writing to demonstrate reading comprehension and also to build background knowledge. We have with us tonight Monica Tino and also Angela St. Lawrence. They are two of our K through 8 science coaches and they're going to talk about how they help teachers and students to address ELA standards through science content.
All right, so we're looking at common core standards that we support in science as we're teaching our lessons. We look at writing standards. They start as early as kindergarten in the Amplify Science lessons in which they are writing together and coming up with sentences based on what they're learning. All the way to 5th grade, writing at the end of each big learning. They could be like a chapter you could look at it as or progress build. They're writing scientific arguments about what they're learning and figuring out. We also support speaking and listening standards in K to 5. They are talking to each other and they're listening to one another. And it's not just talking and listening, it's looking at different routines. You know, you're going to sit next to your partner and this is what it's going to look like and we model it for them and show them how to do it. They're constantly speaking and talking to one another about their ideas. And again, they're using routines, building upon that from K to 5. We talk in kindergarten as engineers and so we give them sentence frames, for example. So when you're speaking to your partner about what you just did with, you know, exerting a force with the ball, this is how we can talk like scientists and say it. All the way up to the 5th grade, kind of using our scientific knowledge and vocabulary to speak with one another and share our understandings. We look at language standards. This is where students are reading, comprehending, and writing about all these complex texts that they're using. They're using their scientific language to speak to one another and write about what they're learning. And we also cover a lot of reading informational text standards. Students are reading a ton of books in science classes and so they're covering a lot of these informational texts in their reading and they're using different reading strategies as they're doing it. A little bit different, obviously, at each grade level, they're building upon it. For example, in kindergarten, we have three units. Each unit has a number of titles. Total in kindergarten, there are 16 titles, books that students are reading. As they go through the lessons, all the books are incorporated in the lessons for the students. So they might go to a reference book, for example, in Lesson 1, 5, and 7 because they're trying to look something up and figure something out. There might be a short story about a science topic that they get information out of. They have big books at K and 1, so the teacher has those big, huge books to be able to look at. And each student has a copy to use. These all come in the kits for them. In 1st grade, they have 16 total titles as well. In 2nd grade, they have 16. And now in 3rd grade, we start to have four units a year, so we have a few more books. 21 total. In 4th grade, we have 22. And in 5th grade, they also have 22. So they're doing a lot of reading and writing and speaking and using all of their standard, their language art standards in science class as well. And Angela's going to talk a little bit about some examples of lessons.
Hi there. So this is just an example of a 2nd grade reading activity. I actually have the books here along with me, too. The students get a chance to look through the books. And this particular one is about landforms and erosion. They're looking at how water changes landforms and they're actually visualizing what that would look like by looking at the pictures. They read in partners. And we see this a lot in 2nd grade, 3rd grade, and so on. But this is, 2nd grade is really where they start to learn this particular skill of visualizing. Go to the next one. In 5th grade, this is just another example, just 2nd grade to 5th grade. 5th grade is also showing the skill of visualizing. And this reading activity, they're doing the exact same skill they did in 2nd grade, but now they're using it in a unit called, oh my goodness, I'm forgetting it right now, but, thank you, Patterns of Earth and Sky. This book is How Big Is Big, How Far Is Far, and they're visualizing how big each planet is, how big the sun is, how far that distance is from planet to planet and sun to planet. This is an example of one of the 5th grade writing samples. Students are writing here about molecules and they're showing their evidence. These are actually two examples from 2nd grade. On the left, you can see it's a diagram. Students are diagramming what it looks like, one of valleys beginning, where a valley starts and ends after a glacier passes through. And then an end of unit writing piece to the right. And they're talking about how a cliff has changed with erosion. Students, as Monica mentioned, are doing a lot of speaking and listening. And I've highlighted one of the standards that the students use a lot. And on the next slide is actually an example of that one called Building on Ideas. And the students are actually sharing their thoughts about evidence that they've learned over the course of the unit. And they're practicing the "I agree," "I disagree," and understanding that it's okay to give opinions and not, it's not a cause for argument. In 5th grade, the speaking and listening standards look a little bit different. They get a little bit more complex. And on the next slide, you'll see that students are using something called Evidence Circles, where they're actually using cards that have evidence on them. And they have to link that evidence to their claims to make a stronger argument. And this is just an example of a class with a couple Evidence Circles in action. Thank you.
Mr. Claffey, do you have any questions or comments?
That's it.
Yes, I think so.
I was just trying to find, I'm sorry, thank you. I was just trying to find out when the New Hampshire science standards were last updated and whether you're expecting a revision soon.
You want to speak to that?
Sure.
I didn't mean to be a gotcha, I was just...
Oh yeah, no, it's okay. So, you know, off the top of my head, I think it was 2011 that the Next Gen Science Standards came out. And then we adopted them in New Hampshire a couple of years later. And then here in Nashua, a couple of years after that. So I think 2016 was when we adopted them here in Nashua.
All right, thank you. And the group we had at the board meeting a couple of weeks ago, the group of children that came in, was that 5th grade?
Yes.
Yeah, that was, that was an excellent presentation. So, and you can see that they're really getting a lot out of it. And I appreciate that you're integrating the ELA standards and working together. I think it's going to help them build that learning scaffolding. All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate you going to be here. Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, so our next item is the Eureka Math Update.
Yep. So we have with us tonight, we have Meg Duprat and we have Beth Wheeler. They are two of, you know, I'm just going to move down. They are two of our math coaches at the elementary level. And then we also have two pilot teachers who have been working with the Eureka Math Squared curriculum all year.
So we wanted to start by sharing some data that supports how the Eureka Squared materials support the shifts we want to see in mathematics instruction. The, all the piloting teachers had the opportunity to share their feedback about the materials in a pretty extensive survey in January. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive and you can see more detailed information from the survey in your packets. But we wanted to highlight the feedback about the three mathematical shifts. So 98.6% of teachers surveyed agreed that Eureka Squared meets the content and focus for their grade level. And 94% of teachers agreed that Eureka Squared instructional design aligns with the coherence of their grade level. And 96.8% of teachers agreed that there is the appropriate balance of rigor, which is conceptual understanding, procedural fluency, and application for their grade level materials. But it's not just Nashua teachers who agree that the materials support the mathematical shifts. Ed Reports recently, sorry, recently released their report about Eureka Squared. And their review shows that they also feel that they are meeting the mathematical shifts. And this is just the overview for each grade level. You can see K through 2 here. Ed Reports uses three gateways which do align to their mathematical shifts. One gateway is focus and coherence, and then rigor and mathematical practice, and finally usability. And here is the 3 through 5 overview. And you can find the full report on Ed Reports if you're interested.
So, the UDL supports that are embedded within the Eureka Math Squared curriculum is one of the driving points why we wanted to pilot this year. So when we think about how a student learns, we have now, based on the science, found that students don't all learn the same way. So these embedded supports make sure that we're allowing access for all of our students. So the embedded supports are, we have action and expression, which is kind of the how of what we're learning. The representation is about the what we're learning. And then the engagement is why we're learning. So having these three components built right into that teacher's manual helps our teachers draw that into their lessons more fluidly and supports all of our learners. The other supports that are right in our teacher's manual are our language supports. These language supports are embedded, again, on those margins, but they support all of our learners while really focusing on those strategies that help our multilingual language learners. So with these embedded supports, they cover these six protocols here. So activating prior knowledge, they provide multiple entry points into mathematics, they use clear, concise, student-facing language, provide strategic active processing time, illustrate multiple models and formats, and provide opportunity for strategic review. And the feedback from our teachers this year have overwhelmingly let us know that all of their learners are feeling like they have access to this curriculum, which is amazing. So while Beth and I would love to talk about Eureka Math Squared all day long, we're not the ones living it. So we invited a couple piloting teachers to kind of share their thoughts on how it's going this year. So we have Melinda Phant, who is a 4th grade teacher at Fairgrounds, and Kat Kohler, who is a 4th grade teacher at Charlotte Ave.
I'm Melinda Phant and I am a 4th grade teacher at Fairgrounds. And we have been doing this now since the beginning of the year. And I will tell you the engagement I see from my students in math compared to last year with Eureka has been night and day. We have kids, when we're working on the fluency section, you would think that we had a game show where we were giving away big money prizes because they are jumping on chairs, they are yelling, they are screaming, they are arguing with each other about who raised their hand first. They are completely engaged and involved in it. When we get into the lesson and we are looking at prior knowledge, there is a much greater retention where they're actually saying, "Oh, that was when we did this," or "This is when this is happening." It has been, I've been teaching math in a couple of different school districts for quite a while with 4th grade. And this year, I have to say, I have seen more engagement, more retention of information. I am absolutely personally in love with the program because all the parts that are there. We have the fluency, we have a starting point, then we get into the lesson. The kids have a variety between the two books, have a variety of ways to learn and to attempt the problems that we can do, and I do, we do, you do, and have that chance to check things off. Exit tickets to just check and see how they're doing. Also, the fact that, for, in my school, the fact that I can print out for families copies of the workbooks that I send home in Spanish so that parents can help with that. And that was during our parent-teacher conferences. The minute we told that to families, we had a number of them were like, "Yes, I would love a copy of that so I can actually help them with their homework." And to me, those things help build that partnership that really helps the child understand how that this affects everyday life and that it is a family commitment. And for me, that's just been huge to watch. So I am thrilled that Eureka Squared is going to be with us again. So, thank you.
My name is Kat Kohler and I am a 4th grade teacher at Charlotte Ave. And I've been piloting the math program this year as well. And I have to agree that the engagement and retention, one of the things that I've noticed that's been really important is, I've noticed such a difference in the progression of learning. I found that in the other program, students would get so frustrated because they didn't have the foundational skills in place. And I'm just not seeing that this year. So even kids who are, kids who struggle with math, the progression builds in such a way that when the new content is being introduced, they're just so ready for it that it's almost intuitive. And it is really a transformation from previous experience. There are a lot of different pieces. You know, I agree with everything that Melinda shared. Some of the additional things that have been really helpful to me is the exit tickets are very quick and easy to get, an assessment of where students are at. And I think, and they also have topic assessments. So instead of just a mid-module and an end-of-module assessment, we're assessing five to six times during a module. And so you're getting a better picture of the student's progress as you're moving along. Another thing that's really significant, I think, with the assessments is previously on the assessment, the standard that they'd be assessing would often be buried in a word problem that then was six questions based on an initial answer. And so assessing what the student could actually do was difficult because you weren't understanding what they could actually do mathematically. A lot of times you were like, "Well, I don't think they really even understood what the question is, let alone..." And so I think the assessments give us a really good picture of what the students can do mathematically. This year in my class, I have five English language learners, including a student who just arrived a couple of months ago from Ukraine. You know, so I have a variety of levels of English language learning. And it's been really great because there are a lot of pieces embedded. So if we're working specifically on word problems, there are actually videos in the lesson where there's no language at all. You watch a little cartoon and you're making inferences about what is going on, what possible questions you might be answering. And so even students who don't have any English are able to access the idea. And, excuse me, so instead of getting bogged down by all of the language in the problems, they're accessing the math. So you're able to really get a handle on where the kids are struggling. And there are word problems. Those aren't eliminated by any means. They need to know how to do those, but they're, thank you, they're, we're able to just see what math they can do. Another thing, the, when I, when I told the kids that I was going to be filling out that survey where they were looking for that feedback, I said, "You know, you guys did the other program before. What do you guys think? Like, I know what I think about this, but what do you guys think?" And I mean unanimously, I was blown away because they weren't like, "Yeah, we like it." You know, I mean, they were so adamant about how much better this program was for them as learners compared to what they remembered previously. So I actually had them write, because we were doing opinion writing at the time, I had them do some opinion writing based on, "Do you think the Nashua School District should adopt this math program? Why or why not? And what reasons do you have?" And so I just wanted to read a couple of things that the students wrote about their experience. So, excuse me. It said, "Last year, math did not stay on topic till we knew it. Kids would get really frustrated and cry because they felt dumb. And when we went to the next topic, kids were confused and hated math. For me personally, math last year made my thinking brain go blank. Like, when I looked at a page in my math book, I was pale as a ghost. I would panic, cry, and even feel nauseous because I didn't understand the math problem. Now that we're using Eureka Squared, I feel way more relieved and none stressed, and math is very easy." I have another student that said, just simply, "I like math better now. In the past, I was stressed, but now using this new program, there are fewer problems on a page." That's one thing that actually students noticed a lot is the readability of the actual content on the page. The photocopied workbooks that we had previously, I mean, it was maybe like a 10-point font. I don't know exactly, but it was very difficult to read. There were no visuals. Spatially on the page, it was hard to navigate the content. And a lot of the kids have commented on, "I can actually read what's on the page now." And that's pretty important, obviously, to be able to interpret what, what problems they're actually solving. In the first Eureka, the words were harder to see. I also like math better because it explains easier strategies. If there's a problem you're stuck on and there's no teacher, there's examples on homework. The homework is easier with examples. There's not just a picture, but there's words to explain the strategies. The strategies are separate on the front page. Examples are one separate page from the homework. So another thing that's been really important for families and for our students is that with every homework assignment is a family letter. And so the problems that they're expected to do on the homework, there are similar examples. Because previously, we were just sending home the homework and there's no math textbook to send home. You could send home the problem set, which would have problems that they had worked out, hopefully accurately. But this is providing parents with a resource where they can get the reasoning behind the strategy and they can actually access the content to be able to help their students. And so, you know, I mean, it's a different group of students, but I've had a lot better homework participation and the students, it's a more manageable amount of homework. So it's checking, you know, it's giving kids an opportunity to practice the skill without it, you know, being a source of tears and hours and hours of agony, which we would hear reports of previously for homework. So this is just the right amount of review for the day's learning without it becoming overwhelming. And I've not had a single complaint about homework this year, which is huge. So, you know, it shows simpler strategies, the student says, there's faster strategies and easier strategies that can get you to nail it. You know, a lot of students talked about how they just felt like every day you were moving on to a new topic and they didn't see how it connected. It was just moving, moving, moving. And I, like I said before, I just think the progression of learning, everything is building on the previous learning so that they, they don't feel like it's a brand-new thing every day, which is often how it felt as a teacher, like, "Okay, they're really not with me on this." You know, I might be able to see the connection, but they weren't making the connections and trying to get them there. It just felt exhausting. And I don't, I don't feel that way this year. So I can't say enough about it. The students are really noticing the difference. And, you know, it's, it's great to see when I'm introducing a new topic and giving the kids the opportunity. The thing that really shows me that they're ready for new learning is when I'm introducing a new topic and kind of just say, "Well, how would you solve this?" And I haven't taught them how to solve it yet, but they're so ready for the new learning and the next step that, you know, we'll have four kids go up with four different strategies and they'll have it. And it's like, huh. It's really, it's really exciting to see. So that's just a little bit of my experience this year.
Mr. Claffey, do anything else? Well, I'm really glad that you brought some of the teachers here that are using it right now and piloting the program. Because it sounds like, and I think it was really great to hear from the students, their perspective. You know, I've observed when we, back when we had Everyday Math and then the evolution to skipping over to Eureka, and then now, so the Eureka Squared. And so, I mean, it's a pretty good sell right now. If you're seeing like the observa, so many observations about, you know, the fact that the students are pointing out the readability of the materials is huge. Can I ask, what's the frequency of homework in this program?
Every lesson has a homework assignment with a parent letter every single time. And, you know, there's just a few problems for each lesson that they do at home. And then there's usually something that this, this is also different, but there's usually a review. Sometimes it'll be something that they haven't even seen until last year. And so some students will struggle with that, but the students that have support at home, they'll be exposed to it. And I also think that perhaps that's why then, when the next thing is introduced, because they were kind of refreshed with what they have seen, they're kind of, you know, primed for it, they're ready for it. So, like I said, I typically hear from parents that, "Oh, homework, like, it's too much, we're overwhelmed." But I just haven't heard that this year. So it seems to really be just the right amount.
That's fantastic. Well, that was actually my next question. I had a whole list of questions that I thought were going to be more of a parent-skewed thing, but you answered most of them while you were speaking. But I do want to reference the fact that that was one thing you hear a lot from the parent community, is that Eureka Math is very frustrating just because it's different from what we grew up doing. Now, I am actually an advocate for it, even though I've been both in the trenches as a parent. And I know that the 4th grade Eureka was like really hard from a parent perspective. And, yeah. But it got, you know, I have, I've looked up the videos online, that thing to kind of figure out, I was like, "I have no idea what they're actually asking you, asking the questions and not being able to answer." But I've also got, spoken with a lot of teachers at the high school level, and this is why I'm kind of become an advocate for it, to say that once students get up to the high school level, if they push through the entire arc of this curriculum, they have actually a better number sense and understanding. But the weak part in the program before was that they were missing pieces of like math facts and that kind of retention. Do you think that the Eureka Squared addresses that a little more?
I do think it addresses it more. Sprints are built, are like little mini, not quizzes, but they're little mini mental math moments that are built right into certain curriculums and test out certain skills. And again, it's like the old minute test for multiplication facts, but the goal is not to try to finish it all, it's to try to get a few more than you got the last time. And they give you two versions. So you do one, you correct it, you immediately go to the second one, and you have them do it again. They have their number, they know what they need to get a little more. And where I used to teach at a place where we had mental math and you could just see kids immediately deflate, I say it's, "We have a sprint day," and the kids cheer. Like, the first time it happened, I stared at them, I said, "It's a sprint. We have a minute." They're like, "Yeah! Are we going to get you both of them?" So they seem to love that. It's helping build number sense. It is not like a multiplication fact quiz each time, but it's different skills that they just need to have that number sense and build up on, so.
Well, thank you.
I do supplement because I want the kids to really have fluency. But I understand fluency to be more than just rote memorization. So, you know, we're spending a lot of time talking about making sure that... So, you know, we're spending a lot of time talking about making sure that fluency encompasses conceptual understanding, that it's not purely rote. But, you know, if you can't, you know, multiply two numbers together, like, if you don't know that fact, are there, is there another fact that can get you there? And so I, I think that Eureka does a really good job of building that kind of fluency, which is critical. I also think that knowing your math facts is, you know, necessary too. So I do supplement to make sure that we have that as well.
Can I just add one more thing? So oftentimes, math fact fluency and automatist, automaticity are used synonymously, and they're not synonymous. So fluency in math, like Kat is talking about, is really the ability to apply strategies and do them in a flexible way that, that makes learning the math efficient and accurate. Automaticity is really like knowing your math facts. And those, those are two different skills, but I would also agree that that's conceptual understanding and being able to apply the thinking flexibly and, and see patterns, that is even more important than having that rote memorization.
I've got two more questions. One is the goal to take this district-wide next year?
The next steps.
All right, excellent. And, well, are you going to get to the, the mean question? Is there a cost difference between Eureka and Eureka Squared?
So we've already purchased Eureka Squared for next year.
Okay, excellent.
So our next steps, we have, our teacher manuals are coming in May. This will give teachers an opportunity to kind of flip through and get acquainted with what that looks like. Our student materials will be shipping in the summer. We also, through a grant, we're getting Didax Manipulatives, which are those hand-on concrete materials for Arcata Five teachers to use in their classrooms that align right with the Eureka Math Squared lessons. We have two summer opportunities. Power Up PD is offered through Great Minds. They kind of takes where we were in Eureka and, you know, bumps us up to Squared, talks about the differences and similarities. So there'll be two opportunities this summer for teachers to attend that. We are also doing a summer institute for teachers. And during this institute, Beth and I will be working with grade-level teams to kind of look at our first 30 days and help plan those out so they're ready and feeling confident rolling into the new year. We'll also have continued support throughout the school year with our coaching cycles that Beth and I continue to do. And then kind of continuing to support teachers with that Zern alignment. We will still have Zern next year, which is our digital resource that aligns. It still does align to Eureka Math Squared as well. And we're finding that the more students are on Zern, along with getting their in-class lessons, we're seeing some significant growth with that as well.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Claffey? All right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
And then, are you staying on board for Zern? All right.
You're staying on board for a couple of things. Great. So I also just wanted to talk a little bit about our professional development focused on best practices for English learners. Thank you, guys, for next year. So I know that Kat, I know that Kat talked a little bit about the supports for multilingual learners. And I've been working very closely with Beth and with, with Meg to develop a professional development plan that will take us all through next year. So our teachers, district-wide, have been receiving professional development related to best practices for English language learners. And that professional development has been very useful and the feedback has been very great. At the same time, that professional development and those best practices that are shown to teachers are kind of shown in isolation. So teachers will learn a strategy and then try it somewhere sometime within their, within their, their, their day. What we would like to do is, we would like to take those practices and intentionally embed them in the Eureka Math Squared implementation so that we have a consistent experience for our elementary teachers, kind of more of a controlled sort of environment. And, and I mean controlled so that we have a shared experience and that we can come together, we can plan lessons thoughtfully, but with language objectives in mind and with also opportunities for all learners, students who are identified, students who are English learners, to be able to have access to grade-level content. We have shared this idea preliminarily with the Department of Justice. They're actually visiting with us tomorrow and Wednesday, so I'm hoping to get some more feedback about that. But our goal is, is, or our objective with this work is to embed those best practices in the Eureka Math Squared lessons so that we can enhance multilingual learners' access to grade-level math content by providing them with structured and targeted language instruction while simultaneously learning mathematics content. And, you know, some of the things that we talk about through our ELA block, through our science block, things like building background knowledge, building vocabulary, all of those skills can be built through the math content block. And so this is really exciting work because this is a great time for teachers to be able to apply the skills that they've acquired, but then really, really strengthen them through this work. Anything to add? Great.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so next is, that, I'm looking forward to that. Do you have any questions or comments, Mr. Claffey? All right. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about how we're going to reach multilingual, language learners. And do you think that's like the trend is to really embrace multi, leaning towards multi-language rather than English language concepts?
Yeah, I mean, so, so it's interesting because the consultant that the Department of Justice hired, Dr. Noni Lusso, we've, Mr. Chilpa and I have been, become very intimate with her work and her research. It's pretty much how we spend all of our days. And over the weekend, we were reading one of her latest books that she published. And she talks a lot about how historically, when we teach English language learners, she talks about how we basically teach them in the margins. You know, during core content time, other things happen for our multilingual learners, and then they're kind of like off to the side getting pieces of the content. We want to stop that practice because we know it's not beneficial for our multilingual learners. But at the same time, we're really focused on this idea that all students are academic language learners. So all of the practices that we will employ to be able to reach our multilingual learners, they really just are good practices for all students. And I think we kind of heard a little bit about this tonight. And, yeah, it's just really exciting work.
Wonderful. All right. Well, go ahead, let's move on into our Zern update.
Great. So you ladies are going to talk a little bit about Zern and how we're using it in the math classroom. But I will just tell you that, so Jonathan Foster, who is our data analyst, he did poll a significant amount of data for us for tonight to talk about Zern and kind of the implications of Zern on student learning or the impact on student learning. And without getting into too much, really, he just kind of synthesized his research. And what he found is that students who were able to complete 20 or more lessons throughout the school year were much more likely to demonstrate proficiency on the statewide assessment, New Hampshire SAS. What you'll notice in the graph that you have, or the bar graph that you have before you, is the students who are in pink, those are the students who have reached grade-level proficiency and/or they are above grade-level proficiency. And then you have that kind of teal color. And you can see in that top cluster of, of bar graphs there, you can see that there's a significant percentage of students who are at or approaching grade-level proficiency. And then certainly that royal blue is the students who are not there yet, and they have a significant amount of unfinished learning. But we are seeing that classes that are implementing, implementing Zern with fidelity are seeing much greater student gains. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about how it's used?
Sure. So we have access to Zern K-8 right now. The K curriculum looks slightly different than the rest. Kindergarten primarily focuses on just building number sense, so it's a lot of game activities for those kindergarten students to work with. Whereas when we get into our first grade through eighth grade lessons, they align with Eureka. So the lesson that they've taught in class that day, they can then get on Zern and they get, you know, an additional practice with it. Gives them a quick little mini lesson with a digital platform. And then as the students are working through problems, one of the great things that students are seeing and teachers are seeing is if a student is getting it incorrectly, they're getting immediate feedback and they're getting immediate support. So instead of students, you know, going through a whole problem set, you know, making the same error over and over and not getting that feedback until the next day when they get that paper back from a teacher, they're getting it right then. So they're able to kind of learn from their mistakes and move on and progress. So students are finding that they feel more successful on that Zern platform. Teachers are kind of asked to use it in three lessons a week. And like Dr. Sharpe D. is saying, the classrooms that are implementing it more frequently, we're definitely seeing that correlation to student success.
Anything, any questions? No. I mean, this graph says it all. It's obviously working and that there's making a significant impact. How long is a typical lesson?
Zern lessons are designed to be about 20 minutes. Some students, it might take a little longer, but it typically wouldn't be less than 20 because of the components within it.
And they align with the Eureka Squared?
They do, yep. So their missions is what they call them instead of modules. Their missions will align with our Eureka Squared modules. And the lesson won't be specific, you know, like it was right now, but it's the overarching topic, which we're actually finding is great for kids to really build those connections. So the districts that have implemented Eureka Math Squared already and still using Zern, they're finding that their students are feeling that they have a better understanding conceptually because they're not seeing the same exact thing, they're seeing the same idea, and they're really being able to apply it. So it's, it's only getting better.
Excellent. And this goes, I know we pay for the K through eight, but it looks like mostly we kind of stop at the middle school level?
Yes. But I can tell you that that, so this data that you have before you only, it only relates to the elementary level. I can tell you that when it comes to usage at the middle school level, it's not really being utilized. So I'm not sure fiscally if it would be responsible to continue using it at the middle school level, just because it's not really being utilized.
Thank you for that also. So, all right. Well, thank you very much. This is fantastic. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. And it looks like our final item on the agenda is the Lexia update.
Yes, thank you so much. So as you can see, we have six schools, six elementary schools that are utilizing Lexia. We have been using Title I money, and we've also been using Title IV grant funds to be able to bring Lexia to these six schools. What you can see before you, if you look specifically at the bar graph, you can see on the left-hand side, the, the percentage in blue of students who started out demonstrating grade-level mastery. And then you can see over to the right, the, so this growth is from September to March. And you can see that some of our schools have experienced some pretty significant growth. I'd like to call out specifically Birch Hill Elementary. Birch Hill Elementary started off, 18% of the students demonstrated grade-level mastery and were up to 48% of the students. So that's a 30% jump. And I did speak with Nadine DeRozier and also Michelle Cuadros, two teachers, a reading specialist and second-grade teacher over at Birch Hill. And I asked them just to clarify which students are using Lexia, and they said every single student is using Lexia at Birch Hill. So this is indicative of, you know, the growth at the entire school. We also have a friend from Bicentennial here. Want to also congratulate Bicentennial. You'll see a 10% increase from 38% proficiency, grade-level mastery, all the way up to 48%, which is really exciting.
This is great. I'm a Birch Hill family, former Birch Hill family, and yay, go team! So, but can you just give us a brief overview, you know, 90 seconds on what Lexia is?
Yeah, so essentially, so students take what is basically a placement test, we'll call it that, to kind of, to be able to identify what their strengths are and what their areas of unfinished learning are. So when they get onto Lexia, the program really is tailored to their individual needs. And then as they are able to kind of progress through the programs, you know, Lexia does adjust to whatever their ability level is or their skill level is. And I also just wanted to add, so it's used as a supplemental resource, it's not used as a core ELA resource.
Right. And this was just recently implemented in the school year, correct?
That's correct.
So obviously, great results already since we had a lot of unfinished learning. Mr. Claffey, any questions? All right. This has been really great information this evening. Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
The only other thing that I just wanted to share is, last Friday on March 31st, there was a Women in Leadership Symposium that was hosted in Plymouth, New Hampshire. And the New Hampshire Association of School Principals put on this great event. And I just wanted to let you know that, so this was a, an event that we brought 20 female leaders from Nashua School District Two, from the elementary level all the way up to the high school level. It was, it was a great opportunity for all of us to share our experiences and then collaborate with colleagues so that we can become increasingly effective leaders. Just a great experience, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Andre and also Mr. Poska for supporting us.
Excellent. I'm glad you had such a good experience. Okay, well, with that, I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So made. So moved.
And I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, we are adjourned at 5:50. Thank you very much.